Two minutes after ten and we'll open up our February eighteenth, two thousand and fifteenth regular session. Please silent or shut off your cellphones at this time. And if you would, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have one deletion on the agenda. Fair Board member, as they brought that recommendation forward yesterday, we appointed Tilly Flynn. Any other additions or deletions?
I have not.
All right. Public comment. There being no public comment, we will move right along. Try and get out of here. Fairly reasonable time today, travel to Salem. Road Department is not, is Rick coming in?
He is here.
He's got all his stuff here.
I don't see him. Uh, no, no. We'll do quick claim deeds requests before the ten ten hearing. It would be Legal Counsel and Darwin, we talked about this yesterday. This is, uh, in the past, there was some land foreclosed on and sold. Apparently, there was some, some issues with tax records, and so we're going to make this right with this, these two property owners, just a quick overview.
So, if you want me to go, I'll go.
Okay.
I've actually pulled them up on the screen here. It's hard to see, I was going to try to thicken these lines out, but, um, Bedhorsen Campbell, I think most of us are familiar with, uh, the location of those two lakes. Um, the Lakeview Pine Estates subdivision was created, obviously, in the sixties or seventies. Um, and we've got, I've got three pins here, and I'll probably need to try to just go up to the screen. So, Smith currently owns this. He owned this as well. We foreclosed on this because the addresses that were in the assessor's database weren't the same. Um, and then sold to Whip, uh, Mr. Whipple. So, Whipple owns this now. You've got a deed in front of you transferring Whipple back to us so that we can then transfer back to Smith. Um, and then what we would exchange to Whipple would be this property, so, just since he did, he, he agreed to it, Whipple, you know, thankfully agreed to it, um, and then that's that, so.
Okay.
Pretty simple, so, I mean, they're like, you know, point two-two, so it would reach, pretty simple. Right, all have BLM access, it's that.
Or so, that's access.
Yeah, no, sorry, not in that force, so.
Mr. Bailey, is there anything out of order? This is sort of out of order.
It is out of order, but this was a real simple fix to the problem, since everyone was willing to do this. If there hadn't been, things would have gotten complicated, but this was Darwin's idea, and he talked to the folks and worked it out, so, yeah, all good and well.
Well, I think this is a great solution, and of course, as you said, Darwin talked to us about it, but I'm more curious, and I'll be even more curious not for today's discussion, but when you look at that other email, is to when a property owner who rightfully owned a piece of property but wasn't notified or thought he had paid his taxes or whatever, you know, where the, I'm glad we were able to come up with this resolution to this situation, but it's kind of ironic that after a number of years, if you haven't paid taxes, you would think.
You're charged with notice of the taxes.
Well, my understanding of the situation was he thought both those properties were included in that one tax statement, but.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering, you know, as a process, because I have talked with you, and I don't look that closely with the legal, you know, I assume I'm paying for all my property, it's just kind of a curious thing, but yes, I'm good.
I'm sort of opposite, I look at every single one of them, and every single.
Well, see, I only, I have a limited number.
So do I.
Well, uh, in this situation, as Dee said, uh, this was sort of, uh, a forgivable or understandable mistake. It's different when somebody has been paying taxes and then they don't get their notices and they just not pay taxes, they go, oh, you know. It's a totally different situation.
So, um, do we need to do anything other than one motion to make this happen, Mr. Bailey?
I think we only got one thing to act on, so.
There's two separate deeds.
Oh, okay.
Two separate deeds.
Yeah, I think we'd make one motion approving both deeds in order to resolve the issue.
We'll make a motion that we approve the quick claim deeds as presented to Byron D. Whipple and Ryan Smith.
Now, second motion, motion's been made and seconded to approve the deeds as presented instead. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now then, this must be the same.
Mr. Smith had phoned yesterday, um, into the clerk's office. One could give me the message, I phoned him back, let him know, I would let him know today what your decision was and get him to the clerk as soon as.
Okay, and we, once again, will acknowledge that the clerk worked diligently to help get this through the process, you had mentioned that yesterday.
Okay, I appreciate you very much.
Long, Darwin. Appreciate you being able to do those things done. A little bit early for the hearing. See anything that we can do there in a minute? Maybe there is.
You can do special transportation.
Yeah. Let's go to special transportation, you've got fifty-eight seconds.
Perfect. We have two forms of funding coming in, state funding and federal funding for special transportation for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen I N. The recommendation is before you from the committee on how those funds should be dispersed, so.
Thank you.
I can elaborate more if you would like.
Uh, we went over it yesterday, Mr. Shown, are you, you've been briefed on it?
Yes, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so you need a motion to accept the allocation of the dollars for special transportation?
Correct.
I'll move that we approve the allocation of SDF funds as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I will submit our application for seconding from the state.
Perfect. Okay, it's ten ten, we'll open up the public hearing on road naming. Um, and as we opened that up, um, we did have, we have had discussion of possibly continuing this hearing, which there's count to the Christmas Valley time. Uh, we'll find out, I think there's some written comments that's come in, we'll find out if there's any public input other than written at this time. Hearing is open, Darwin will give an overview of road naming. Hearing never do.
I've also prepared Google Earth, um, layers and, and some points that we can all reference to help us understand what we're talking about today. We have a, a Lake County, um, ordinance thirty-one A, which is the road naming and real addressing ordinance. Um, the, you know, board commissioners is required to take action when there's a private road that provides access to three or more buildings and requires a name in order to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Um, if I zoom in further, we're, we're at this, let me get to the screen. At this point, we're half mile north of Christmas Valley Highway, three quarters of a mile and one mile north of Christmas Valley Highway. We've got a land use decision just last fall that was approved here for another home, which would, by the black marks, you can, those are address points on, on these roads, which, which are all currently addressed off of Fossil Lake Road. Whereas this is a subdivision of forty-plus homes, um, there's potential for additional addressing needed out here. Um, but currently, and you'll have to excuse these names, I'll talk to, about those in a minute, but, um, these, these two points, there's no way to fit a third address in between them. As we're on this side of the road, they all got to be, I think it's evens, and, you know, there's just no way to put two evens in between, because it's like a two and a four, so, we had to go through this road naming address. So, um, road naming process, sorry. Um, that's the discussion, you, it's, there's a faint red line that's also shown on this that, that is, uh, about seventy different parcels that were notified, um, and I could probably try to change that really quickly, but we, I extended those notices out as far as the private property ended for these folks that may come off of this road, or this road, or this road. So, um, you know, those people were notified, there was questionnaires sent out to individuals on what they would like the road to be named. As you can see, there's a, if you were to count each of these, um, black marks, which represent an address, um, there's, from my original count, there's about ten that would, um, need a, a new address assigned if, if, you know, we fall through and, and name these roads as necessary.
Are those two roads, if at all, the access was a, a wholly plotted road?
Yeah, and, and these other ones would. Pen Phillips in the, you know, mid-sixties was dividing up all, most of Christmas Valley, and I've got in the record, um, each of those survey maps for these roads now. Specifically for, you know, roads coming off of Fossil Lake Road right here, they're , uh, plot, what is this? A record of survey number one forty-seven, um, is, is the map that, you know, fits that. So, um, and that would, that would just, and, and each of these is done by a section, so, um, you know, that's just talking about this, this section, I think it's seven, or six, actually, but, so anyways, it's.
So, Jackson, all that that you notified, there's only two plotted roads?
Yeah.
Pen Phillips subdivision and all of it.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, the ones that are further sin, um, we could probably zoom in on those and check where they're, where they are, uh, you know, getting access to, they're probably likely not coming, uh, three and a half miles, I think it is, down either of these roads. They're probably just going straight.
But for road naming, it's plotted roads, they're not county roads, they're plotted roads, and so those other easements or what, however they're accessing is not for this hearing today.
Yeah, so it's not really, I mean, you know, something we don't need to spend much time on. The main thing is, is that as we, we're going east to west, these are lanes, and, and that's how we, our ordinance says we name them. So, really, that's why I've said, you know, anywhere going east and west along this line coming off of Fossil Lake Road, you know, if and when this, you know, uh, this road gets extended further, that it would be named whatever these guys decide to name it, and same with these other ones.
So, what am I, I'm just, I'm as much curious about the input, because I know there was some concerns around this naming convention.
So, my first call that I got on this was from Lynn Oster, who lives right, you know, right up here, and he actually comes off of, um, you know, Fossil Lake Road down, down this drive, and, and can get to his property. There's a, there's a couple other directions he can come from. His addresses are actually currently off Sam's Way, um, which is about another mile or so to the north, at about, right here, to the north, so he, he can come in this way, or he can come in this way.
Make sure your arrow is, zoom in on that. What is that?
This?
ATV trap, is it?
ATV trap.
Or no, I think it's a golf course.
Or something.
Somebody's plotted golf course.
During, during the solar hearing that, this is Obsidian owns this, they call it Fremont Solar, when we had that hearing, he said they planted certain types of houses out there just to check. That's why his testimony wasn't there.
Another economic.
We didn't talk about that too much, but.
Kind of dry.
Yeah, kind of.
Lot of sand, sand traps.
Yeah, yeah, lots of sand.
Desert golfing up to, at your best.
So Lynn, Lynn called, we discussed it, um, currently, what will show up on, I'm not sure if it's going to show up on Google Earth, but it shows up on some of our layer, um, like the, the county website, um, GIS mapping that Lane County helps provide for us, we've got, the assessor's office has got a contract with it, it's on our website. It'll, it'll name this as Oster Farm Road, which, you know, it's not supposed to be road, but, um, because it's going east and west, but then, and here, see, so, I saw it for a second here, you can kind of barely see it, Google Earth has got this name, it's Oster Farm Road right here.
Okay, for, for the hearing purpose though, Darwin, we're talking three roads, three names?
Right, and this is one of them, this is the most north one. And so, it's appearing on certain databases as already named as Oster Farm Road. However, the layer, and I wish I'd just pull up real quick, you'd kind of get an idea. You barely can put yourself.
Yeah? Is Sam's Way another one?
Sam's Way is another one, and so is, um, Reggie Road.
And Reggie Road.
Mm-hmm. Those are the only three that I've found that, that potentially are affected by a future road naming. Oster Farm's only one that would be now. Sam's and Reggie are a separate discussion, is part of this discussion today, but it's a different hearing.
Okay, so.
It's a different process, and different notices to, to individuals.
Okay, so, I want to, this, this can take a lot of different ways, but for the hearing and for decision for the commissioners to make, this is based around just one road then? Just?
It's based off three roads. There are three roads that, that, there are about ten addresses, which we're about to add in eleven, and that, um, is the third on that middle road, that we do need to name it.
So those three, once again, are Oster, Reggie, and Sam?
No, uh, Sam, they're, yeah, Sam, let me, let me try to, I was trying to pull this up as well.
Well, which ones are, I don't hear about Sam, if it's not part of, what are the three?
Right, it's not, it's not part of. The three that we're talking about are here, here, and here.
Do they currently have names?
No, they, they do not.
By, by the local folks?
By our, yeah, by our stuff, yeah.
By the local folks.
By the local, local folks. Oster is somewhere, but Lynn and I didn't get into specifics as to where it was.
Okay.
And what I wanted to pull up is to show you that, that, see, Google Earth has got a label here, and then it comes out this way, and then it also T, so, I mean, it's being a T, which, a road naming with a T doesn't, doesn't really work, so, um.
But what we're, what we're being asked to do is name the road off of Fossil Lake here, here, and here, so whatever's going on over there is not.
Well, but what I'm saying is that anything eventually, I mean, this would all be future name, I mean, we're not going to break it here, and then now we're going to start calling something else, one word in the desert, so.
Only if there's a plotted road, or, if not, a plotted, a plotted road is going to take people having the easements.
Yeah, so the plotted road goes, ends here, uh, it ends here, it ends here, there's also a little point here, but nothing would have to ever be named off of that. There's also here, and then as you get further out here, there's more plotted roads from Pen Phillips.
And that, so that's a separate subdivision out there than what this one is?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's off of a, I mean, did them all at the same time, recorded, recorded, recorded.
Without plotted roads and fully.
Yeah, yeah, there's not, I haven't seen any, did anything all the way through. And so, and a lot of these are going to end, you're going to see that, you know, if we zoomed in real close, there's nothing between this, there's probably nothing there, there's certainly nothing through here. So, you know, it's just, those people, we're not, we're not, you know, assuming any, you know, liability on access or anything like that, I mean, it's, these are, these are extremely clear, and what I'm just saying is that I notified everywhere out here because, you know, someday, we will, you know, if they are going to say they're going to come down this, and they're going to prove that access, well, I'm not, I'm not proving that under a future development, they would, I would give them an address off of that if they're saying that one direction. Now, why Oster Farms is, is part of the big question is that if, if, if it exists out there, and, and Lynn did say she wanted, like it to stay named whatever, and that's why I'm very grateful that we're going to go up there, and I hope he's there that day when we have the follow-up hearing, uh, March.
We haven't absolutely decided that until today.
Yeah, we haven't, yeah, we're trying to decide, but, um, no, we can kind of determine that, because there's, like we said, there's three already existing, there's the Oster Farm Road, which is, maybe can quickly change it to lane, and then there's the Sam's Way Lane, and then up another two miles is Reggie.
That's for a later day.
That's for, that's for another.
So, with the interest of time, Bill, with the testimony you have coming forth from the public, we're talking about one road, which is at now our lane, called fifth direction is going Oster Farm, right? So what is the public testimony during the hearing process?
Are you doing one road or the three?
We're doing the three.
You're doing three, or?
Yes, it is three, it was advertised as three, it's.
Okay.
What's? So what's the public testimony?
So, we've got, you know, no comment from ODOT, we've got, you know, uh, you know, another John Brennan, who was just property out there, he's not one that, um, ten addresses that they're currently signed, so he's got their land. The Gordons out there also, um, they are off of Fossil Lake Road, and, uh, they, they are one of these.
Click which one it is.
They're, they're, that's these folks, so, um, they've got this address currently off of Fossil Lake Road, which will have to change. And I, I sent an email back to them that as we, who are naming it, it will be changed.
You have copies of that for the record?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's in this record, but I can get you guys to sort your copies. Um, there's not much to it, they asked if there was a commercial use or something going on, and then they said just where they're located, so they didn't, they didn't have any comment on whether it should be named or anything like that, so, um, and neither did John Brennan, um, and ODOT did it as well. The only other comment I got, because Lynn Oster, I've already discussed what he said, and how was, there's nothing really in the record other than our phone conversation, which was, um, he wants it, you know, still in Oster Lane to be out there, or Oster.
So, it's clear that we have Oster to the north. What are the, the middle and the bottom one known as locally?
Uh, nothing to, to my knowledge, and nothing that anyone has shared with me, yeah.
Okay. And we got no input as to what they should be named?
Yeah, no input, no input at all. Um, the, the Van Duzen Brothers that are out there, um, you've all seen the letter that came from them, but that's talking again about Reggie Road, so.
Yeah.
They don't confuse it with Oster. So, so, this is, this is completely up to you, and, and I'm just trying to staff you, and I tried my best to be a little proactive about road naming these, um, Pen Phillips subdivisions that exist out there that currently don't have any names. Now, I put, as you continue to go up Fossil Lake Road, a little marker at each point in which I found a plotted subdivision from Pen Phillips, in which there could, there is a deeded access point off of Fossil Lake Road, but currently no, uh, known road name for these roads, except that I have, you know, where Reggie Road is here on, I wrote as, as a preliminary idea of, of Grant Lane, I'm using a county, um, alphabetically, the Oregon county is going, um, from north to south, Reggie Road is the only one, um, that, there are no, um, this has got an address point, um, of Fossil Lake Road again, so it's, and, again, that's another hearing, but why, why I bring it up is that we have no known, uh, names for those three right now, um, that's in our database, and, uh, no public input on what those should be named.
Well, well, Darwin, as things develop, that's whenever I believe those will be named, we may end up with, we have another hearing that may get going here in just a minute, of people that want their vacate roads, so there could be in the future whoever's sitting here as commissioners, whether somebody come in and want to vacate those roads within it, they buy all that, and so, today, and that's for a whole nother hearing, I'm not sure that we need to go in there and name all of those until there is some development come in, because there's possibilities for roads to be vacated as ownership changes and things like that.
And, and I know that this has caused a lot of, you know, you know, I don't think it's outcry, but there's, there's been, you know, a few people who are getting pretty excited about us changing some of these road names out there. The ordinance is clear that we are trying to stick to the historical names.
So, Mr. Chair, when you close this, I'll, I'll have two recommendations.
Okay. So, the hearing's open, and this is when we take public testimony about, uh, the three roads and the naming of those three roads at this time, so if you'd like to have anything on record before I close the hearing, now's the time. You traveled all the way here just to watch the process?
Yeah.
This isn't us.
He's actually here for the vacation.
Oh.
For what?
Road vacation.
Oh, okay, um, now, if, like the Van Duzen Brothers.
Duzen.
Duzen. Yeah, anybody that's close to, uh, Fossil Lake, they're always going to keep Fossil Lake address, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, you got to be down the lane in a way, so like Gary Perkins' private driveway, he's always going to be Fossil Lake.
So, I've tried my best where there can be more than three show up, and, and like where Perkins is at.
It's at the private driveway, isn't it?
Yeah, he, he absolutely can stay the same, there's, there, um, his house is, I'm almost there, I think. So, one, so this is Gary right here.
Yeah, he's got his son along, too, but that should be a private driveway, isn't it?
Yeah, and so, well, it's, it is, it's on the.
It's on Pen Phillips?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the Pen Phillips, uh, but they're not going to be more than three, and.
Yeah, with him over and all, I am.
And so there would be no new sign being put up there, and, and, um, yeah, there's, there's not a road naming possibility there. Now, if they subdivided more, then they would, obviously would be, but, as that stands, there's, there's a few people like him that would, their address is never going to change.
Okay, is there any other public testimony during the hearing process for road naming? There being none, we're going to close the hearing at ten twenty-nine?
I'm going to recommend that we continue the hearing process to our March meeting in Christmas Valley. And a second recommendation that has nothing to do with the hearing for those three roads is to have, when we look at, Darwin talked to me about the county, uh, road naming for future roads that aren't being considered right now, I would also like to have that discussion in the Christmas Valley area.
I, I will.
And while, I, I'll just throw one more thing, Commissioner, the whole idea of having future roads named so we don't have to have multiple meetings is, I, I like that idea, but I think the community really needs to have a lot of input into what the future roads are going to be. Well, you, you'll still have it though, that they could, uh, the people on that lane can still change it after you named it to a, so when you put, for your, your reference and keep everything in order, when you put all these names up through there, do you have to have a hearing to do it, you know, if, to even do it the first time?
Yeah, and so that's why I'm saying, we're, that's why we're only focused on these three, however, naming these three, if we decide to go kind of with this pattern maybe in the future, it, it makes sense to bring it up now.
Okay, so if you're going to have a hearing on the rest of them, you could do the hearing, but you're not going to put the sign there and change it until the people are actually down there, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we're not going to have the cost but the same.
There's a lot of questions to be asked.
Yeah, there are a lot, and, you know, currently, this is the only one that's affected by the three plus addresses.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's other, um, areas across all of Lake County that probably don't have mixed roads name, not only North Lake, but I would imagine, I, I think there's quite a few out in the plus area and others, and once we start.
Yeah, the biggest thing you're going to have to explain to the public, so we're going to put these at this reference at this point now, but that doesn't mean, that has to get out, that's the big one, that's got to get out, or that's, they're, they're all stirred up, you know.
Mr. Bailey, to continue the hearing till, uh, March fourth, does it need the motion or just?
It's by consensus.
So, by consensus, we'll continue the hearing, March fourth in Christmas Valley. Please advertise it as such. Mr. Shown, I will not be there at that, that meeting. Mr. Cusner will chair that meeting.
Time specific, still ten ten?
Um, usually we get more public.
Yeah, public, ten thirty then?
Yeah, I would go for ten thirty for the.
I just want to get these specifics.
Okay, so we're running just a minute behind, I will open up the next hearing at I will open up the next hearing at ten-thirty, that public hearing on, uh, property vacation resolution. Uh, this has been advertised. This is in Silver Lake and, uh, Darwin, do you want to give an overview on this one?
Tony Hand has made an application to vacate, uh, specific, um, roads, platted roads and an alley, um, in Silver Lake. I'll move the screen.
Did I officially open the hearing?
Uh-huh. I've, I've marked, you can see these in blue barely, sorry, not picking up fine. But what's being proposed to be vacated is, is this, this, uh, platted road and this one and then this alleyway. He purchased this, what is a tax lot. There's eight actual individual platted lots in there, but, but the maps only show, um, tax lots. So, um, he's proposing to build a home here. He's, um, I think he's already submitted building plans. But it's, you know, as it's in the town site of, of Silver Lake, uh, that's an outright permitted use. So, um, really, you know, these, clearly these, these are, uh, platted streets that are undeveloped.
And unnamed?
And un, no, they are named. They are named. You know, they, they got, this north one, you know, always have, you know, county road system names. Anyway, so, uh, if, if vacated, it would split these, uh, roads in half. So that's why these, these other property owners were notified. They clearly still have access. All, these three would have access there as well as there. And also this, this road currently is not being proposed to be vacated as well, so.
So have you had any verbal or written, um, concerns to them?
Uh, haven't.
I guess.
I think only the, um, uh, Greg Davis, uh, supervising the state fire marshal was the only one that actually got back to, you know, this one and he just said to contact the, um, you know, sort of like rural fire protection district. But all the, all the, uh, utilities and, and, you know, what the, um, agencies have been notified. To me, certainly this is, you know, recommended that we vacate those roads. There's, you know, there are great access points still on the outsides of these properties.
Okay, so you got no written and no opposition from any of the utilities for the fire district or any of that? Rick, did you have concerns with those?
No, my letter just said it may, may not because I had to wait to see if anybody sent in. And, um, the fire marshal, he never had no concern far as, in years, like there's, what was his take of it?
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't have any, uh, he says since we're up here, he didn't provide comment in regards to the proposed vacations. The Oregon Office of the State Fire Marshal has no requirements at this time. Please contact the, sort of like rural fire protection district. Thank you.
So the adjacent landowners, north and south on these, would inherit those properties?
Half of them.
Half of them.
Unless they own both sides.
Right.
Get all.
Yeah, we've got the entire alley.
Was it?
That's just because our, our.
Okay, and is there any, you guys have anything you want to bring forward during the hearing process?
Uh, well, I just had the one owner in the top corner there calling. He was in favor of it. He didn't have any concerns and was in favor of it.
Is there any other testimony on pro or con?
The, I would say the road in between is kind of a ditch or call. It's been kind of a drainage for the town and it continues clear out to the highway, to the, to the trade department.
To the top.
Always.
We're at my long distance.
Yeah.
On the years, we, on the years, we get some oysters. Rick and I have been up there wintering. We've got a little bit of oysters.
Oh, yeah, we've been on the, we, we really got tongue lashing.
We, we got hooked up a little bit. So there being no other public testimony?
Tom O'Larry, uh, he was definitely for it, thought we ought to clean up a lot more other than that. But as you can see, as me and Jim was looking at the property up top the screen, a lot of those, they have buildings out, what, those people need to vacate those. Yeah, I mean.
Right where your pointer is right now, that area there.
Sometimes they don't clean that out because they're already out in the right of way there.
Yeah, they're, they're halfway through into the right of way.
Pulling you back to this hearing here, there is some other challenges there.
Well, what I meant, Tom O'Larry said, yeah, that he's a road advisory for that area. And I talked to him and he thought it'd be great, so.
Okay. Any other public testimony? There being none, we'll close the hearing at ten twenty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thank you. I knew who was paying you for that.
He just made an appointment today.
Wow, that's pretty good news. Discussion amongst Commissioner and staff. Um, there's no opposition that I, that has come forward. Legal counsel, is there anything that we've missed or anything that you see?
No, just to reiterate what you already know is when vacation occurs, the property is vacated. It's sort of a removal of a burden on the land and so the adjacent property owners owned to the mural of the area that's being vacated. So then with regard to the alley, that will now be owned entirely by the landowner owns all of those parcels. And then on the outside streets, those will go to the middle on Midland Street.
Okay, um, the resolution that's in our package, is that appropriate on?
No, so I, I haven't yet prepared for you an order, but summarizing the resolution. So I'm going to prepare an order for you just to sign.
We don't have, we don't have an order or order number or resolution number to make this happen?
But I, but, you know, the resolution is, or the order is going to be the exact same language that's in the, um, the legal descriptions that were in the resolution today proposing to vacate was the order.
Mr. Bailey, without the description and the order number and the resolution number, are we able to move forward contingent upon your review of those that are put together?
Yes, you can approve both the resolution and the order subject to the actual official naming. That would just be a clerical. So you can approve it without having an actual order and then later your number would be inserted.
So I grabbed a copy of the last order that we did, which was for, um, I think it was, which one was this one? Or lines?
That's okay, Darwin. I'm going to go ahead and make that motion subject to the final numbering of the resolution and the order.
Motion, I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve order and resolution contingent upon the numbering and, uh, and if all necessary work to be done. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries in the matter of vacation of certain property within Lake County.
So you move forward.
Your building there?
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Two houses going in there. We're going to divide the property in.
Very, very nice. Appreciate, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Do you know any good electricians to wire the house?
I do, but I didn't see him, so.
And you're going to have to tie him down.
I just, I just thought you eventually moved to Christmas Valley where your businesses.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I do, I do need to get him. All right, so, um, Dave's been waiting a while. He's got some things, HVAC, RFP. Dave Burn, sir.
Thank you, Darwin.
Interchanges the days, uh, that was asked yesterday, so.
Do we have a copy of it?
You should have them with.
You don't because I failed to print it out because I was fighting with my friend yesterday.
So the one I've got here.
Some corrections on it from yesterday.
So the release date's different.
The dates have been corrected or made appropriate for, uh, advertising.
Okay.
And.
Some of the conditional will instead of may, change that to will need to happen. Much later that one. And then that backwards said, there's a jail.
It's probably you talking to me.
Did you have any?
No, I, I have a road through there you won't miss and apparently it does or something.
No, I didn't like it that.
No, it was just.
That we, we put may instead of will on the kind of, you put may and.
And this here says the jail is to the courthouse. Change that to courthouse.
Two tax law numbers and then from there we can get the side of the road. Those two tax law numbers and then.
Make sure that the ones that have.
And I know.
So we can look at it together.
The applications now, but.
The plans.
I'll make that motion that we approve going out for the request for proposals as the amended proposal shows.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to go out for request for proposals for firms qualified to, to design a heating, ventilation, air conditioning system by utilizing any part of the existing HVAC system. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Jennifer. There she is. You've been so patient. We have next, uh, resolution fifteen dash two dash three revised building fees. People just getting ready to build.
Yeah, they're asking questions.
We better approve it.
Yep, so we can get out of here.
We went through the hearing process on this already.
Yep.
And this is to formalize and come within the timeframe of what the state requirements are.
Yep.
And so do you need to give more review than?
Well, just for my clerk, since I wasn't here yesterday and I apologize, but, uh, this is driven by the online process, the E committee.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and kind of cleaned up a little bit of our stuff that we don't have.
Right.
As far as space and deferred permits.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number fifteen dash two dash three in the matter of intent to adopt revised fee methods consistent with O A R nine-one-eight dash zero-five-zero dash zero-one-zero-zero in the building department.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Yes, thank you, Jen. If there's any complaint, it's all your fault.
What's new?
Okay.
So isn't that everything?
That's everything except for legal updates. Uh, road department broom purchase?
No.
Did that?
Oh. I get that.
Oh, sorry about that. I called that earlier and he wasn't in the room, so he doesn't get his equipment.
Oh, that's a shame. True Value just, True Value just called and said they've got twelve in stock. Nice handles, so good to go.
Oh, you guys.
Easy to haul, easy to transport.
Yeah.
I sent you over to the side, Rick. Sorry about that. We'll come back to what we skipped earlier. Uh, road department, uh, we have two. We have, uh, road department broom purchase and we have a roller. And, uh, yesterday we talked about these. They qualify under two different rules to bill the purchase piece.
Rule nine, rule eight, yeah.
Do you have any kind of overview at all, I'm sure?
Well, uh, the only piece that's new is the broom because you don't buy them used and they're pretty worn out. And this broom is the only one that's manufactured with a side ship on the broom itself. The rest of them, uh, doesn't have an application. So it's kind of got a single source and that's why it's tied to, I think it's a nine, I go that in front of me, but because single source, and then we use the government discount on it as well. So, uh, the roller is a used roller, uh, it's a third of the cost of a new one and it's got a year warranty. And we have a lot of comparable prices to that year of two thousand and ten and everything above that roller's been running about twenty thousand. Painting equipment, we're not, just for the record, we're not buying new equipment there because we don't know of our future on how much payment. So we're trying to keep stuff that's going to set for nine months a year. It's tough to get in and buy it brand new just to depreciate and set there, so. But that's kind of where we are at. I, I will be coming forward and I talked to Brad and Dan about it a little bit yesterday, getting a truck and chassis underneath a water tanker. Two Fords are seventy-eights and our, our old blue trucks are seventy-six. So next year that one will turn, uh, forty years old and others, the two are, are right there at thirty-seven years old. We're getting pretty critical and they're getting pretty worn out. But again, we're not buying new on that. We'll probably be buying some that's long mileage as we can get but in the forty thousand or something, just the new way we can have to do business.
I, yeah, I'm ready to approve it, but I would like Rick to call my wife and suggest that my seventy-six Chevy pickup might be getting one out. So maybe she can consider and agree to an eighties model.
Okay.
But, but I believe he does have a nineties model upgraded Chevy pickup. That would be my rebuttal if I, if he's talking to me or whatever.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve both the roller purchase under, uh, the review board rule nine and the broom purchase under review board rule eight as presented by the road master.
And the proposed truck.
We'll take up the truck at a later date.
I'll second your motion, uh, to purchase both pieces of equipment by board rule nine on the broom and, uh, board rule, contract review board rule eight. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Sorry to overlook you, Rick.
Well, that was my fault. I was being facetious, but I just appreciate.
Bring a truck forward.
Yes, well, I appreciate Rick once again looking out there to the future. We all know the uncertainty of the future revenues to, to run our department and he's maintaining the equipment he's got that in so many cases is very old. And then when he does request a, um, new piece of equipment, it's never new. It's one that's really researched, so thanks for giving it.
We're trying.
Well, you do. I mean, you, you do. Appreciate that.
So now I'll go to legal updates, Mr. Bailey.
Uh, nothing that needs to come to board's attention right now. I've dealt with, uh, a couple of the department heads on various issues and things seem to be going along smoothly there, so nothing you need to worry about at the moment.
Okay, anything for executive session?
No.
Just one quick comment. I did sign your dollar.
Dan, did the, uh, date work out for you on road advisory?
Oh, I haven't looked, Rick.
Go over calendars real fast on that before we adjourn.
That's a holiday.
What?
That's a holiday.
Is it your birthday?
It's Benito Juarez's birthday.
Oh, I forgot.
Yeah. No, that should, that should work.
I'm looking for the date that was March.
The sixteenth of March.
Sixteenth of, ten, ten o'clock in Paisley.
Yeah. And we already called and set up the homestead.
Very good.
So it's kind of immaterial if it worked for me.
Oh, I shouldn't quite said that. We could have changed everything, Dan.
This is good.
We worked around you.
Yeah. Literally.
Just a, a quick thing. I'm going to be heading to Kaiser, Salem Mary. I have to go before the Oregon Transportation Commission as the act chair and there are other act chairs around our area going. It's going to give me an opportunity to testify on the needs on roads, primarily state roads, but I have planned on bringing forward that our road systems in our counties are, we're not able, among other programs, we're not able to even do the preservation that's needed at this time just to make sure the OTC keeps county roads as stocks if there's any possible funding possibilities that we can get to our, our county roads. The states themselves, they, they have no money. We're looking at the step of eighteen twenty-one. You know, and you can't hardly even look out that far with the cost of rock and everything on the state highways and so on. But I will, if you have any thoughts, I guess.
Will there be any, uh? Will there be any, uh, staff from the legislative assembly in attendance?
I don't know, I don't know.
Because, you know, we drafted up fifteen letters, or Denise did, thank, thank you again Denise, uh, sending to all of our five reps, uh, on the shortage, the road inventory, the road analysis of five hundred million plus dollars across the state, as well as we've weighed in on the, the potential for any future new revenues being split in a different way, if we drive that point home, you know, that would be good, actually, I appreciate you being there.
Yeah, the, the formula's absolutely, yes.
Did, uh, you guys get the email, convince your state? And is he talking about a whole nother different tax than what we're?
Oh, yes, that's.
That's a whole nother deal?
Yes.
Well, he's, he's calling, I, I have to admit, I kind of read it on the, on the fly yesterday, so I didn't read the whole thing, because.
You were reading it when you were driving?
No, I said on the fly, and as you know, I don't fly, so.
The, the other thing on, uh, this meeting is, is that the stiff dollars and through SCOAC, we talked about those, and there's only nineteen million dollars this last round to go through the whole region for, and I'm going to talk to them that that does not promote for good projects, basically, it promotes for projects to fit within a small amount of dollars, just to get projects to come forward, and so I may promote that they're better off to put those dollars towards a big project across the state of Oregon instead of projects that's not going to make a difference in our highway system, I'd much rather see either link restrictions or, uh, safety areas addressed and.
Yeah.
So, anyways, just wanted to.
We don't need any more baby sidewalks.
I knew, yeah, I faced long enough to get that out.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else to come before us? At five minutes to eleven, we will adjourn.